Hello, everyone. Good evening. But the group here today. Lydia, how are you?
I'm okay. How are you guys?
Doing good.
Sorry, I missed the last two.
We have missed you. We actually canceled the last one because there were so few of us available.
Yeah, I did see that email after the fact. It looks like some good progress has been made, though.
Well, you know, we have the zoning project that you've been spearheading is underway. We don't have that tonight. He is out of the country.
Okay. Do you know if Ingram's joining?
I don't know. I didn't hear from anyone. I'm pretty sure we have a new commissioner. New planning commissioner, so.
Would that have been Greg? Greg's replacement?
Um, so, yeah. Yeah, I heard his name. I heard him say that he was planning commission when we were on the zoning steering committee, but I didn't. I didn't get a note of who it was and I didn't have an email, so. I don't know. Should we wait for Ingram to have a chance to join?
I don't even think I have Aaron or Jim's phone numbers.
I don't have cellphone numbers. I did get it right with September joint meeting.
Right? Right?
Well, I guess while we give them a minute or two, I did put some materials on the on the Google Drive and we'll talk about that, but there's time to review those and share comments if you haven't gotten to it yet. And I also got the minutes ready for review and I can't say I did a very good job, but at least they're.
Thank you for doing this.
They're better than.
Promise to take back over today.
You know, Eric does a pretty good job taking notes during the sessions, so it was really just about making sure there was a little time to clean them up.
Yeah, cleanliness is not a not a thing I do well.
All right, well, should we six thirty-five? I don't see anyone on. I don't see anyone waiting to get in.
One of these days will be a line out the door, twenty-five people in line to get in.
Shall we go ahead and call it to order? And we have Ingram members join later. We can just rearrange our agenda.
Yes.
That works.
Six thirty-six, we're calling to order. I'll try to keep an eye on the waiting room, just in case anyone's trying to get in. Should we do roll call? Kirsten, Capitello, I'm here. Eric?
Al Chap here.
Lydia?
Lydia Herring here.
And Vince?
Vince, uh, Rodilla here.
Matt is not available to join us tonight. Citizen comments. We don't have anyone on the line right now. Ingram Borough updates. We don't have Ingram on the line right now, so we'll skip that for now. Joint multi-ministerial zoning project update.
Before you jump in, I cannot find tonight's Google Doc. Am I?
You can't? Somebody's in it. Who's in it? Lydia?
I'm in it now. If you go to the I can send you this link.
It's fine. I, I, I'll just go to the drive.
I didn't put the live link. Let me go ahead and share my screen, too. I didn't put the live link in in the email like I usually do because it's only for Crafton. Where we put them. And since this was a joint meeting, I put the static PDF.
All right. Now I'm picking up what you're putting down. I'm just getting there.
I can't figure out how to put something in the chat.
I don't know that we have chat enabled.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's the link to the document.
Yep. All right, I'm in it.
You got it. Okay.
Sorry, sorry for the delay. Let's keep this brief. I've got two hospitals to attend to tonight.
Sorry to hear that, Eric.
This is crazy times. All right.
I am trying to bring up, trying to find where I saved it. I'm trying to open up the the PDF of the agenda.
Oh, I see.
Here we go. And I'll share that on my screen. Because I know Lydia is taking comments in the Google Drive version. But the agenda itself is a little neater to share for anybody who's watching the static items. Okay. Here we go. We have the agenda shared. So we've done the call to order, the roll call, citizen comments, Ingram updates, we're halting on. So that brings us to the joint multi-ministerial zoning project update. So that project has been moving forward, finally. I know it's been a long time in the process. We talked about the kickoff a little bit at the July meeting. The kickoff was held at the end of June. But I know not everyone was on the call then, so we did have a kickoff in June. It was pretty small. This is the way that the consultant set it up. It was more of a just administrative kickoff. They came with their full team and they did a site tour and they did some site documentation. You know, walked around, drove around, took photos, took stock of what the, what the place was like. We looked through Crafton and Ingram. We did have an actual kickoff. I attended and Mayor Perry attended and Ingram was also invited. They weren't able to come. They said they would come, but they had a conflict, I guess, at the last minute, so they had their opportunity. But that kickoff meeting was more focused on, you know, for, for our attendance, it was more focused on how we're going to handle the billing and the split of efforts between Crafton and Ingram. We gave them some guidance about documents they needed to look at, et cetera. We did join them on part of the walking tour. It was probably the hottest day in June.
Nice.
We were pretty, we were pretty done by the end of an hour, and so we left them to go finish there. Their tour more as a driving tour indicated on a map where they should make sure that they looked at some of the areas that were you know, different kind of development patterns or different areas that they, we needed, we wanted them to be sure that they took a look at, so they understood the, the different patterns through Crafton and Ingram. But for the kickoff meeting itself that was held with you know, representatives from Crafton and Ingram, the point was more to talk through just how to, how to handle administration and contacts and billing, so. Um, that kickoff was in, was in June and they, they did their site tour and then throughout July, they were supposed to be having they were supposed to be reviewing all the documents they were given. They looked at our comprehensive plan, our zoning code, obviously, the parks plan. The planning commission's notes from our workshops over the past few years and the vision document that was put together by the planning commission. And then they, they also conducted interviews with staff members. So they did do interviews with the borough manager. They did interviews with our code enforcement officer and Public Works and also several members of administration, just asking about. There's a lot in the code that is focused on how it's administered and enforced and the fees associated. And so they talked to, to staff members about how that works and what the pain points are and which, which things are difficult to understand. Which things need to be more clear or easier to administer. So they, that was part of their initial fact finding. Their first.
Sorry to interrupt, but that would have been done in both Crafton and Ingram, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yes. And in the project administration, the way it was set up, Crafton and Ingram, as per the RFP, are each getting their own their own product, each getting their own deliverable, but we will, we will be having that overlay between the two communities and the having a single consultant do the entire process ensures consistency between both communities, but we'll each have our own zoning code. And so as, as a part of that, there is a separate point of contact for each. Anything related to, to Crafton. Point of contact is me and anything related to Ingram, they've assigned their own point of contact and billing is separate. So the consultant has to track anything they do that is applied jointly. They split the cost fifty percent. And anything that's more specific to Crafton, they, they bill to us and anything that's more specific to Ingram, they bill to Ingram.
Cool.
I would assume that that also applies to all of the interviews. We have a larger staff. I assume they billed us more than they did Ingram. I don't look at Ingram's invoices, but I did approve the ones that were submitted to Crafton. The visioning event was then held on August eighteenth. I know I saw Vince there and Eric. I saw you there, right? I saw you there.
I had, yes, it was parent night, so I made a guest quick appearance, but yes. Wanted to make sure we padded the numbers and get as many names on that sheet as possible. How many people ended up attending? Do we know?
Um, I don't remember offhand the total number. It was like sixty-something. I think it was in I think it was in the document that I posted on the Google Drive for this meeting. Let me go see if I can find it. And I can share that as well on the screen.
I see here attendees thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay. I'm misremembering then. Thirty-two attendees. They had a sign-in sheet and I'm not sure if everyone signed in. But
Oh, yeah.
of those who did sign in.
I mean, do you feel like it was well-attended? Or is it the usual suspects that you knew everybody? Were there people that you haven't seen before when you were there? You know what I mean?
I feel like it was well-attended. Especially considering that about a week before, and this had been advertised for about a month at that point. It had been announced at two separate council meetings. It had been advertised on Savvy Citizen several times. It had been on the Borough website. We'd had flyers up on local businesses. The consultants themselves attended the Rotary Rib Fest and Lama Plop, which apparently was minus a llama. They actually attended themselves and they passed out flyers and advertised it. So I didn't realize they were going to do that and I thought that was nice to, to hear that they'd actually gone to the, the event. Anyways, with, it had been, it had been announced and advertised in advance, but the, about a week before the school released their schedule and they had parent night the same night, so. Given that conflict, I was, I was really happy with how many people came. It was pretty busy.
I thought you were gonna say you were really happy, then that's for the parent night. Just kidding. Sorry, keep going.
I would have liked to have gone to parent night.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go ahead and stop this so I can share my whole screen and we can see the highlights. Um. So there's, there's thirty-two people written in this highlight. So after the event, I, I asked that they put together some, this slideshow of you know, some key highlights for the event so that we could include it in the following council meeting, and these were shown at council. And this PDF was put on the, the planning commission Google Drive. They did put together these slides and it includes some highlights from the event. An overview of what was, what was done, open house from four to seven. And count, an account of the attendees, which is thirty-two. And I, Eric and Vince, I know you both were there and I know it's been a little while now, so maybe I am misremembering, but I feel like I left the event thinking that it was over fifty. So that, that may be the number of people who signed in and there may have been more dropped in.
Uh, yes, I, I, I think that you're doing yourself a dis serve. Well, not yourself, that they're, they're doing a disservice a little bit, right? Because you know, s- s- signed in attendees or, you know, something like that, because it, it felt like, you know, there was, there was, uh, what did I count? Twelve? Twelve people in the room that weren't, you know, on the you know, planning counts, you know, not, not Perry, not, you know what I mean? Not the, you know, the, the engineer, you know, the people who were there. Aside from that, I counted twelve people that I didn't know, right? Now, like, they could have been somehow related to the borough, but there was at least twelve people, and so, and I was only there for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, maybe, you know? So, yeah, I'd say that there was probably significantly more than thirty-two.
But yeah, I agree. That sounds pretty low to me.
But it was not, it was not easy, like you know, one critique I'd have. And, and there wouldn't be many to it. One critique I'd have would be that it wasn't obvious, like, in your face that we need you to sign in. We want you to, you know what I mean? Like, I went and sought out the sign-in sheet. But I could have very easily left without having seen one. You know?
That's true. The sign-in sheet was right by the door, but it was also just a paper on a table. Ignore it.
Right. So it, not, not a big deal. No, you know, no, no one's, no one's judging us by it, but oh my God, are you serious?
There were definitely people there that I.
Hi, I'm Eric. I didn't.
Video.
Yeah. It, it, it goes off if the internet goes slow. It's a thing. Anyway. The, the question that I, I, I really want to know is, what did you think? The people who did come that you didn't know. Are they curious, engaged? You know, had nothing to better, better to do on a Thursday night or, you know what I mean? What, what was your take from, from that side of it?
So I got there a few minutes late. I, I couldn't leave work until four, so I got there around four or five, four or eight, maybe. And it was already there were already a number of people in the room.
Yeah.
And I would say it only got a little bit busier throughout and people were leaving regularly. I mean, there were very few people who stayed the whole time, but it was around the same number of people the entire time, so.
There were people who stayed the whole time?
There were, I, I'm not sure if anyone stayed the whole time besides me, honestly. Most people did not stay the whole time.
Okay.
But there were still people there at seven o'clock. There were people there at four, people there at five, people there at six. It was a fairly steady number of people throughout and it was constantly changing, so. You know, there were probably like twenty people per hour. At least fifteen people per hour.
Yeah, that's great.
Somewhere between there. And there were, I, there were probably more from Crafton, but there were a good number of people from Ingram.
So, for, yes. So there was none, there, this was not done in Ingram. This was only done at Crafton.
It was only held in Crafton and Ingram agreed to that. We talked about locations. They didn't really have a location to offer. This was the location that, that was suggested that was most available and worked for everyone and Ingram was on board with that. But yes, it was only held once and it was in Crafton and we did have, we did have attendees from both communities, so that was good. That they did. You know, we had Ingram residents who felt like they'd seen the ad and they felt included and they came. But I, I would say there were more who attended from Crafton, which is to be.
Does anyone recall seeing any planning commission members from Ingram?
I wouldn't know who they are.
Hmm. I don't recall offhand, actually. I, I think Jim was there.
Okay.
But I can't say that.
Is Jim the guy that missed, missed out the need, needing, uh?
No, that's Aaron.
It's Aaron, okay. I can't visualize Jim, I'm sorry.
Uh. Yeah, I, I feel like at least one of them was there, but I I'm not sure I can say that with certainty now. It's, it's been a month. My memory is not. I've seen them a couple of times on other steering committee meetings, so I might be misremembering. I did see council members there and I saw several, I met some, several of their steering committee members there who I hadn't met before, so.
I'll be right back, sorry.
Yeah, so they used, and I'm sharing my screen now. Hopefully you, you can all see these slides that the consultant shared. They had maps out on the tables of three different areas. And they had one of their team members at each table with Legos on them and, and legends. And they use that to kind of talk people through the goals of the process and the goals of this particular event and kind of get them to be a little bit visionary about it. Each of the colors of Legos represented a different kind of building. And people were moving the Legos around and using them. I think they got conversation and ideas out of it and certainly certainly got people interested and more informed about the process and what it can mean for both communities. So they had one table that was focused on Crafton's downtown and the area around the busway and another one that was focused on Ingram's downtown and area around the busway and then one that was focused on the shopping plaza. And then these slides were posted in the planning commission Google, uh, Google Drive and they were also shared at the council meeting that followed this event. There were some photos of the event and then some of the some of the themes and some of the comments that were heard throughout the event of what, what residents were saying that they wanted. So there's a slide for Ingram Station. Picture of the Ingram Station table. There's a slide for the Crafton Station comments. People talked about creating a downtown feel. Preserving and enhancing how easy it is to walk. The American Legion will probably have to go. Again, these are just the consultant's recaps of comments they heard, so. Comments about making the most of the opportunity. Filling in empty lots with buildings that have a mix of storefronts and housing, building new buildings up to the sidewalk, balance desires for parking with desires for walkability. There you have a picture of our other planning commissioner, Matt Greiner. He was there for the first hour or so, at least. And then the shopping center. They recapped things they heard there. A thesis on importance to Crafton Borough of the Ball Field site. I definitely heard some of those comments. People were definitely interested in talking, not just about the, the shopping plaza, but also the area that's owned by the school district and the borough. Across the street. Potential value as preserved green space value as catalytic bargaining piece to engender whole area development. Agreement from a lot of people that there is a higher and better use for the entire area currently used as parking lot. And a lot of discussions around creating small scale mixed use with block patterns and green space and housing to fortify our residential tax base. So I think it was a, I think it was a good event that got interest and certainly served to tell people that this project is kicking off and what it is and what it can mean for, for the borough and certainly got people talking. I know Eric and Vince, you both attended. Do you have anything to add that's not in those slides?
No, I, I think that it captures it. I, um I think so. I, I worry a little bit that it has nothing to do with the event. It's just like, what is zoning? You know? What does that have to do with me? As a, you know, my, my neighbor, little old lady, you know, what, why would I go to that? Does that have to do with me? You know, how do we, how do we make this like real to people? You know, I mean to, to a lot of people who live here. The one thing that, the one investment they've made in their lifetime is their house, their home. And the more it's worth, the better their retirement's gonna be, you know? So how do we make that dotted line connection that there is a there's a direct correlation into how we manage our zoning to how much we can get our property values to escalate, you know?
Eric, I'm gonna let you continue that for a sec because I'm supposed to be cooking dinner and I need to go check. It's not.
Don't burn the mac and cheese.
Be right back.
You, you know what I mean? Like, I, I don't know. I don't know. Like, I don't know, I don't know what the Waffle House, what is the, you know, this, this is, I, you know, I, I work in you know, data, right? And, and I constantly tell my techie friends, no. Gotta speak Waffle House. Like, if you were gonna tell somebody that you bumped into at the Waffle House, what it is at this dashboard or whatever the hell you're doing. What, what does it mean? Why, why should they give a, you know, darn about it? Like, what is zoning? What's the, what, how do we, how do we, how do we put that into, you know, the tiniest possible vices? And I'm not, I'm not diminutizing people. I'm, I'm trying to like, see, how do we connect this to what it is in ordinary life? Like, that's.
I know we haven't talked about it yet, but I do think the diagnostic report did a decent job kind of explaining why it matters. Why, why zoning matters and how it should function. I know most people aren't gonna read this report, I guess.
Right.
So you start printing out copies and handing it to people and highlighting pieces.
Well, let's, let's go on to that and then we can let's go on to that and then we can have a bigger discussion because, um yeah, th- those are some of the next steps. So the steering committee had a meeting August twenty-fourth. It was a kickoff meeting. And I actually appreciate it that the consultants did this. A lot of people couldn't attend that event. And they did do a doodle poll and they put it out in advance and tried to find a time that everyone could make and, you know, it, it wasn't very easy and I think some people who, some people never even responded. So they did, they actually offered a follow-up. They did two, two versions of the kickoff. They did a daytime version and then an evening session the following week. So hopefully most people were able to attend between the two.
So what date, what date was the second one?
I don't recall. I didn't attend the second one. I went to the first one.
Okay.
But they offered a follow-up the following week or two weeks. I, I can look that up if you want to know what date it was.
I was just gonna catch her in the notes. It's, it can be after the fact.
A week or so later. I mean, it's not important to anybody to.
They, they sent out a doodle poll again and they set up, they asked if there was a time, they suggested a few times and, and tried to select a time that people who missed the first one could try to make the second one.
Yeah, that's kind of them.
Um. And then there was, and then, so then now they have submitted their diagnostic report draft. And that was also uploaded to the planning commission drive. It was also shared with council and it's been shared with both steering committees. So let me just see if I can bring that up. We're not gonna go through it the whole thing on this call, but you all have access to it and I'll bring it up so we have a visual.
So just to clarify, I'm sorry if I don't know this already, but is it two different steering committees or is it a single steering committee for the, for both joint?
So each, the way we decided to do it because we wanted to have collaboration between two communities, but also the ability to meet separately. We decided to do eight members. Decided to do eight members per community. So there's an eight-member Crafton Steering Committee and an eight-member Ingram Steering Committee and that allows. You know, sixteen people between the two, which is manageable when we do joint meetings. So, so far we have done joint meetings. Um, but as it gets further into developing content, we might do individual meetings for each community. So far, it's just been kickoff and presenting the diagnostic report.
Right.
Um, so so far they've been joint meetings and it's. Crafton has eight people and Ingram has eight people.
Thanks for the clarification.
Um, so this diagnostic report is a summary of the consultants that, you know, they did their. Their site visit and walking tour documentation. They've done a review of our uh of our existing code against best practices and the state's requirements. Which have changed regularly and. Our code needed some updates. Um, and then also a review of that against our comprehensive plan and the comments that they were receiving from from residents at that visioning. Session and um also the. All of the input they received during the staff interviews that they conducted. So this diagnostic report is the first deliverable they have for the first. Third of their work. The first um, a first of three phases was this diagnostic report. Basically.
I don't know how many people are gonna read this, but um, and I have not read every single word. I will not. Will not lie, but um, the um. Actually, I will lie. I'll lie often, god damn it, but not about this. Um, the question that I have though is. There's, there's no glossary. You know, um, there, there is, there is some jargon in here that I don't get. And you guys are smart enough to explain to me. What do they mean by conservancy? That was, that was, I was so confused by what. Like, I, what, what?
What do you mean with respect to when they talk about that Crafton has?
They use the word conservancy throughout this.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't just hit, you ca- control up, you'll see it.
Well, I'm in a browser right now, so I don't. Think that will work, but.
It works. Yeah, I just did it. Sure, yep.
Well, this is why this has been shared, though. So this is a draft. This is their first draft and there are, there are some things that I am going to comment on. Um, and they deliberately shared it as a draft. They want the steering committee input. And when this was shared, I I also.
It's not a complaint. I'm just, I'm confused. You know what I mean? Like, I I don't know what they mean by that. And like, the definition they give about hillsides doesn't. Like residential. I uh, uh, hit, hit, what's Mac do? It's a, it's the app. What's a control version? Yeah, consider, yeah, there you go. Conservancy. You'll see it. It's like, I don't know, there's ten. Ten times they talk about it. Um. Eleven.
So I think that's something that's actually from the state code. Municipal planning code. There are certain terms that are. You know, zoning is is illegal.
Read, read the sentence. This, this is the one that threw me.
But I I can't give you a solid answer on that. I think that's a comment that you should leave. That's, that's where we're at.
Really? Okay. Alright. Alright, I I I just, I just didn't understand it. Like, go to the next one, right? Like, read this sentence. Conservancy districts.
It's one of the comments that the um steering committee had when this was first shared. We had a. We had a quick meeting where they presented it and they walked through the timeline that they wanted for comments and took any questions. There, there was only one question. Well, there were a couple of questions. Um. There's only one. Specific question that I recall and it was about parking. It was about a sentence in here about parking. Um, and there were a few other kind of more general questions about just next steps. Um.
Anyway, I, yeah, I, so, okay. So cut the shit, where, where can I leave a comment? I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor this, but like.
Well, so, so one of the questions that was asked was that they include a map with this. Um, when they do the final, add, add the map and they said they'll absolutely do that at the zoning map. Um, and then, so this draft. Was shared with both steering committees and I asked if. If we could go ahead and share it with the planning commission and council and they said sure and I said I intended to do that. So this has now been shared with council. And it's been shared with the, the planning commission. Um, it's been posted as a PDF and. You can share comments. They would like comments back by October fifth, so that's next week. Next Wednesday. Um, by the end of day, end of the evening, next Wednesday. They would like comments back on this document, so everyone has time to look through it and share your comments. Ideally, you would download this PDF and. Onto your, your desktop or your laptop, however you work and use the comment feature. Or have the capability of doing that. But they're open, they said they're open to taking comments in whatever format you like. So if you prefer to. Do a Word document or an email where you say, page sixteen, here's my comment.
Totally fine. We'll do whatever they do, but. That's like inviting billable hours, like. I don't know. I mean, like, I'll probably be one of four people that send comments back, so you know, I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about.
The feedback is important, though. I mean, it's worth paying for to have a few iterations.
It just feels like if they, if they shared this out as a locked Google document, you know what I mean? And then you can just put in your comments on it, but then everybody sees, you know, I see what you're saying.
We deliberately decided not to do that because if too many people are in it at once, we could have quorum issues. So. We, we did try to steer people towards using the PDF comment feature if at all possible. Because it does, they can then. Uh, that's much easier for them. It will save them time. It will reserve our, our hours that we're paying them for for other things. Um, those PDF comments can all be condensed with a single click from multiple.
And, and my PDF comments are simply this. Can you unpack the term conservancy and some other key terminologies like P one, P two, P, yeah, the, 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 the salient points to zoning? Just at a high level to put in key terms, you know, slash glossary at the end, like, uh, cuz obviously this word has a meaning.
I think.
It looks like.
Our current zoning, actually.
Yeah.
I think that's our current zoning and that's where adding a map will make it more clear, but.
It looks like there's, sorry to interrupt you, Kirsten, but in the appendix, there's a, a section that says Craft and Code section. And it talks about the conservancy district as article. I don't, I can't read Roman numerals very well, but uh, it's under two twenty-five sixteen. And it says it's positive that Crafton has a special district to preserve hillsides.
Our current zoning, we have a conservancy district, but having that map in there. Would make it more helpful to actually see the current zoning.
Yeah, I just, what is the definite, what is that? Does that mean, you know, we, we make sure that species are protected, you know, or is that like? We're trying to preserve, you know, the, the, the construction on hillsides. Cuz I, you know, like this, the engineering report, if you just tap through the eleven, not ten.
Yeah.
instances of the word, you'll, you'll see it. It's just like. This is a thing. I don't know what this thing is, but this is a thing, so. I I'll, I'll send it back. Where do I send it? Where do we send it? So let's.
So, comments. Um. Oh, I should probably all send you the. The email. I will make a note to make sure I send you that, the email for the consultant. So comments for this. Ideally, you would use the comment feature on the PDF that will. Be simpler to. To gather all these comments and reserve our, the hours we're paying our consultant for other things. But we also recognize not everybody knows how to do that, so they'll accept comments however you want to submit them. And you can submit comments directly to Jocelyn, the project manager. Um, and I'll make sure that I share that email with everyone on planning commission. Um, or you can send them to me and I'll forward them on to Jocelyn.
Whatever I send to Jocelyn, I'll copy you on, just so you know where.
I, either of those are fine. I'll make sure that I get that email shared with everyone here right after this. I, I know I shared it with council. I don't think I remember to share it with, with planning commission, so.
Not a big deal.
I'll get that, I'll get that shared.
And like I said, I, you know, I'm one of like four people on the planet that might read this and have that question, so. I'm, I'm fine not, not having that appetite satiated, so that's fine.
I mean, hope, hopefully people will comment on it and. So going back to where we started with this, when Lydia first brought it up, it is, this is the first deliverable, but it's really good information. It gives good justification. For what this project is about, why they're making the decisions they're making, what some of the overall directions they're taking are and why. They haven't developed our zoning language yet, but they're giving the basis for what changes they're going to make and why. Um, and so. This right now is a draft. It's being shared for review and comment, but once they finalize it and they'll finalize it. About two weeks after they get everyone's um comments in, they owe us a, a final. So we'll have that in October. And that will be shared publicly. That will be put on the borough website. And they also said they could prepare an executive summary and I, I asked them to please do that. I think. Like Lydia said, some of the initial information in this is really. Is really nice. It's helpful. Um, and so they will turn that into. A shorter, easier to read executive summary. That we can use to, to promote on social media, on the website, make, you know, it should be. Much easier to read and help be a, a tool for promoting the, the project and its purpose.
When is the next uh newsletter being prepared?
It's being prepared now. So this, not this, the um. The summary of the. August visioning event is going to be in the next newsletter. But this diagnostic report's not gonna make the cut.
I, a- and it's totally fine, but you could say that, uh, you know, diagnostic report is coming out. Um, but the, the, as far as the newsletter is being prepared right now. Um, I, I really challenge all of us. I, I don't have an answer. I don't have, you guys are all smart, I mean, uh, I don't have an answer. Like, what is the? What is a plain English thing that could go into the newsletter? It says. This is why zoning is important to people.
I think it's simply, it's improving the community and. People wanna live in. Cool communities, nice communities that offer amenities. And your house will be worth more if more people wanna move to this town.
That, that's, so, so you, you just described here. I'm seventy-eight years old. Couple of years out of retirement. I have no idea what you just said, but you used the word cool and that scares me. So, um, like, how do I make that? You, you know, even how do we unpack that in a sentence? I have the same fruit fly frying, flying around my, my, my desk.
It's annoying. I don't even know why.
I just, I don't know. Um.
I don't know, making improvements.
Like.
Making improvements to the borough.
But what, what does that mean? Improvement super, I, I still got a pothole in front of my house. You know what I mean? What's improvements to pro, like, like it's, I'm trying to take that abstract. This is gonna make things better. Right? Is this gonna make stuff better and give a concrete statement of how? Right? Like zoning allows us to collectively manage the municipality. To make it more attractive to business and protect the interest of people who live here and that raises housing values. Like that, there's like, there's a better way to say that, you know?
I mean, there's no like two-word. Thing that gets it across. So there's some, there's some amount of explanation that's required.
Uh, it's what I'm saying, like, what's, what is the shortest? You know, we, we only, we only have a, we only have a little, like, uh, airline can, little seven-ounce can to fill. So, so how do we put it into that, you know, Waffle House speak into the seven-ounce can, like my metaphor?
I think that paragraph, why is this zoning diagnostic report important? That's pretty good.
I think Lydia had done a, a previous. Description of the project too that was used for the press release.
That's where I'm going, like, that, that was good, right? So between that and this, like, what, what is, what can we, what can we extrapolate? And, and ask them to put into that newsletter. So the little old lady up the street, you know, when I talked to her, like, what the hell are they doing down there? Like, there's a, there's, there's something that she can read that's not me saying it, that she is, you know, it comes from an authoritative source. Cuz you saw it in the Crafton newsletter, you know? That's what I'm trying to do, like, and I, I don't mean to, like, like. I'm not picking a little lazy. I'm like, I'm trying to, like, how do we make this? So if people see it and in a, you know, brief. Newsletter format, they see, oh, yeah, that is important.
Eric, I think that's a great thing for you to take a stab at. You wait, what kind of language you think works that?
It's a great question.
I- in my experience, the reality is it's not the same thing that works for everybody. So the more, the more of us take a stab at putting together a sentence or two. We can use a different points, different, different things might resonate with different people.
When's the newsletter deadline, do you know?
Oh, it's already passed.
Oh, shit. I forget I said anything. Doesn't matter.
But this is something that can go, you know, it can always be put on the website. It can be put out on Savvy. It can be, can be put on Facebook and social media. Reminding people that this is happening and it would be good to. So when, when this final report is updated and issued. In October, it'll be made available to the public on the website. I don't anticipate many people are gonna read. This whole thirty-five-page paper thing, but I think we absolutely will post and promote the executive summary at the same time. Which will be much shorter and contain all the highlights of. What direction are they taking and why and why does this matter? And having a recap that we use as the. You know, the phrase when you post it on social media and post it on the website. That'll be a good time to use that.
Cool.
And we can, we can use what we've already, what Lydia already prepared, which was good, but we can also prepare something new so they see it in a different way and different wording. If you wanna take a stab at something that you think will.
Maybe it's just Lydia's, i- i- is, is that too long for a newsletter? For that kind of a thing?
I think, I think. We submitted it to be part of the last newsletter, didn't we? And then Coletta paraphrased it and. They included it. That's my recollection.
Either the one before that. Either the last one or the one before that.
Okay. I'll let it go.
I think it's still valuable to have some. Promotional materials, like, like Kirsten was suggesting with Facebook and there's gonna be future newsletters. There's gonna be. Reasons to have some verbiage available.
Yeah, the more, the more we have, the better and we each will have different ideas for what's gonna really. Be clear and understandable to people. So Eric, I think it's great if you, if you wanna.
I'll try.
Together a few sentences that you think makes sense. Go for it.
Yes, indeed.
Can we just read this? I'll read this. Sentence, this paragraph out loud, though. I think it's pretty nice. Zoning regulations impact many aspects of a community, including the natural environment, housing availability, the feel of a neighborhood. Access to green space, health and walkability, entrepreneurial o- opportunities and economic stability. Therefore, an effective and efficient zoning code is paramount to achieving a community's desired outcomes. I think that captures a lot of it. The economic stability. Kinda hits the. Housing market piece that you were coming at it from. And also the housing availability.
Where is that?
It's on page five. The second paragraph.
Yeah, that's it. That's it. That's, that's, yes. I, I guess I didn't read every word. That's perfect.
So I'll update the notes to say, suggest. Um, using. Using the page five, second paragraph in promotional materials. Promotional, I don't, what would we call them?
Promotional materials, sounds good.
Promotional materials, okay.
I think this is going a little deeper than what we're talking about right now with promotional materials, but it's worth mentioning for the planning commission and, and future. Any, anytime we wanna dive into more detail, I think their principles are really well put together here. Principle one. Talks about what zoning is legally allowed to do and that's, that's an important place to start when you talk about. What zoning is and what it is doing. It's important to. Understand what the law actually allows it to do. Um, and this is a nice summary of what, what it's legally allowed to do. Um. It is, it is allowed to protect health, safety and general welfare and there are legal standards that limit what those mean and what it can do. Um. Principle two, it should respect both existing and desired development patterns. That one's a little more vague, but it's, they described it, and that's a a good way to summarize, I think, what's what zoning can do. And then it can be the implementation of a plan and not a barrier. And that is also relevant um to Crafton, this was something that came out of our comprehensive plan, a recommendation that we update our zoning to reflect. The types of goals. And the types of um characteristics that people expressed during the comprehensive plan that they wanted. And this is a very common reason for updating zoning, that it can be a barrier if it's not reflective of the goals of a community. So I like the way they've put together these three principles.
You know, I like what you said, I I didn't, didn't um, when I skimmed this, I didn't think that um. Think twice about, you know, these are three beliefs that they're trying to impart on us, which is fine. But what you're saying is, this is really the limit. Of what a zoning plan can do, I think that's a. It it's it's an interesting, uh it it doesn't quite say that the way that you did, you know, that's, that's, that's insightful. Right, we're we're, we know, we have a ceiling. Of what our zoning plan can do, and this is it, we're going right up to it.
They've even described that a little bit more, regulations that do not relate to these public interests may overstep the police power granted to cities. And may not be legally defensible, and that that's an important part, this is not as exciting to the community, but it is a part of why we're updating our zoning. If we have zoning that's outdated and is not in alignment with what's currently legally allowed, we, we are at legal risk.
Yeah. I love it.
So.
Thank you.
So those are, these are some of the next steps in this process. Um this planning commission and the steering committee and council all have until um October fifth to look through, share your comments. In the PDF as comments, if you can, in whatever format you can do, if if you can't do the comment feature. Um share those with the consultant or share those with me and I'll forward them to the consultant. Um and then when they do the update, they will give us, this whole document will be shared publicly and they'll give us that executive summary. So that'll give us another piece of. You know, another promotional piece that we can share, we can, you know. Talk about in our next planning commission meeting, which no one from the public attends. Um we can put out on public, you know, on social media, on all the channels that we, that we each use, we can share wherever else we know about. We can put out a a notice on Savvy Citizen that this has been made available on the website. And that can be another, the next step in, you know, letting the community know what's happening and why, and giving them. Some initial information about where it's headed.
Cool.
Just a question, we're doing everything through the Borough websites, right, we're not, there's no created. Website specifically for this project, the way that Thrive had.
No, we didn't, we didn't have a separate website in the scope, so we're doing it on our website.
So just the Borough websites.
Mm-hmm.
Each will post, okay.
Yeah, well Crafton is, I don't know if Ingram is a website.
Ingram, Ingram has one, yeah, I think Greg had been working on that. Last year.
No, it's just, it's whether or not they include and publish said information.
Right, okay, sorry, I thought you said that.
Website, maybe, but yeah, is it, you know? Last updated, I knew he said it.
Yeah, we we are making sure that everything is, gets shared equally, but we can't. It's a little, it's a little tricky. Trying to actually keep on top of what each side is doing because we can't really manage Ingram's process for them, so. And and they do have, they do have less staff than we do.
Yep.
Although our website is also run by volunteer primarily, it sometimes takes a little time to get things posted on it. So that gets us through A, B and C. The last item was the planning commission session to discuss, there had been. Interest previously in having a a planning commission specific session with the consultant to discuss. Planning commission input, um where we left off at our July meeting was that that might be just uh Vince and Eric. Um and Lydia, you weren't in attendance at that meeting, so you can weigh in here, but the the idea then. Was that it might just be the members who are not part of the steering committee, it might just be like a subcommittee of planning commission. Meeting with the consultants and that would allow, allow us to avoid any quorum issues, um while still getting a lot of planning commission feedback. Um you all have the opportunity to look through the diagnostic report and give your comments and. Um so I put this on the agenda to see, you know, do we wanna go ahead and schedule a planning commission meeting, do you wanna? Hold on that and wait until it's a little further along, um you know, when, when would you like to schedule? Are we, are we ready for that, or do you wanna keep that for a later time?
My suggestion.
Yeah.
Sorry, my suggestion would be to wait until we're a little further along, then there's a little more.
Nope.
Detail to. Discuss.
I agree, yeah.
But I am fine with the plan that was set forth, if Vince and Eric wanna be the representatives to avoid a quorum, I'm I'm okay with that. And then I can provide any comments I have. Written, maybe ahead of that meeting if you guys want.
But vice versa, I'd like to suggest, Lydia, you're, you're, you have more insight, more comments to offer than I do, you know? Um I make noise, um I don't know that I add a lot of value all the time. So, I mean, we can, I'm more than happy to volunteer myself out of it, or I can do it, I have no problem either way. But I think that you're, you're a bet, you're a more informed representative than I am.
I don't know about that, but why don't we, since if everyone's agreeable to wait a little bit, we can kind of punt on the decision.
Kick it down the road, we'll decide later.
I'll put Eric or Lydia.
There you go.
And then.
There will be a planning commission.
Yes.
Subcommittee with the consultant to be scheduled at a later date.
Perfectly said, yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, so basically no, no quorum. Is the point of that.
Right.
I I mean, and even that can be revisited, but that's where we seem to be landing in July, that um we have two planning commission members on the steering committee. And so that leaves three planning or mission members and. I mean, obviously, Lydia, you weren't able to attend in July, so the conversation was slightly limited by the fact that we didn't have a whole group, but.
Is the planning, commission session, um is it, is it intended to be closed door? Could we just bring uh the consultant to one of our meetings and just have a, you know, little round table amongst us? Open to the public if you wanna come, you know what I mean, that way we can all be there.
And that's, that's an option, that's certainly an option, I think that's what we were discussing.
Whatever, you know what I mean, like something like that, you know, give them some, some heads up so they can plan for it, but I don't know.
I think, so I'm going back to what we talked about previously and. Uh we don't have to decide now if we're not scheduling it yet anyways, these, these, these can continue to be options. But we talked about having it be part of a planning commission scheduled meeting where it's open to the public and. There are rarely many members of the public on the line, but it would be open and it would be recorded, which may limit what people are willing to say. Um we also had talked about it possibly.
This group.
We also had talked about it possibly being an in-person session where. Some of the planning commissioners could sit down around a a table with a representative from the consulting groups and. You know, I I I don't have any preference on those, I think that's more for for the rest of you to decide how you'd like to do it, but we can. We can continue to keep all of those on the table to be determined.
Great ideas, great ideas, we'll revisit it at some point further.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So before we move off this topic, can somebody just? Explain the, what happens now, so there's a phase two and a phase three. Uh obviously, there's the final, finalization of this diagnostic report, two weeks after October fifth. And then, and then where does it go?
I don't remember how they called their next phases, but the first was the diagnostic report, that's, you know, gathering all the background, existing information. And doing their first assessment, the, then there's. I don't remember what they called them, but there's essentially, I think, a draft and a final, they're, they're going to draft it, they're gonna review it with us, community, and then there's a final. We'd have to go back to their scope to see what they.
Right, okay.
Their phases.
Yeah, it's just been a really long time since I looked at this. But I know there's all those legal requirements too, that get built in with the solicitors and sending it to the MPC.
There's a whole review process and adoption process. I think the second phase is kind of figuring out all the content and reviewing them with all the back and forth involved. And then the third phase is, is kind of the finalization and all of the procedural pieces involved. But again, I I I don't recall offhand either what they, how they actually termed those or bucketed those.
What's the, what's the delta between what we paid for this, for this study versus what we have to pay the solicitor to review it all? Don't answer that.
I mean, hopefully, hopefully they do a good job and. There's probably. There's often still review.
Yes.
The solicitor, but hopefully it's not excessive, they are.
Put into the public record, let them for you that one. Alright, keep going, sorry.
Okay, well, those are, those are the zoning project updates I have, and we've had lots of discussion around it, is there anything else, or do we?
I'm good.
Go on to the parking update.
Go, let's get it done.
All right, well, we still have no one on Ingram Borough, and the way I put this on the agenda, since it was a joint. I just put everything Crafton under Crafton Borough Updates, um I think that was our July meeting that we had the parking study. Does that sound right to you all, Lydia, I know you were, you were out for that meeting, there was a parking study done by.
An officer.
A, an officer from the fire department and the same person, member um of the fire department and the police department. Had done a parking study back in twenty twenty, um and I think that was actually initiated by requests from council back then. I can't say for sure since I wasn't involved, but um there were discussions back then between council and the planning commission. About just resident concerns around parking, and so one of the steps that was taken is that someone from the. One of the officers was asked to do a parking study and he did kind of a walking tour around and and documented on a map where. Um there were issues or difficulties getting a, an emergency vehicle. Around corners where vehicles are often parked very close to the corner at tight corners, so he'd marked up a map about, you know, that indicated where we needed to. Reinforce the parking standards at corners. And this was discussed with some fairly robust discussion at that July meeting. About where it came from and what it meant and what the actual distances were and. None of that was actually in the study that was given to us, and so. What ended up happening is we um as a planning commission motioned to. Send it to council, but with the caveat that more description needed to be added. About what those, what the actual changes were and where we were, where the study was recommending. A change beyond what's currently the legal standard at an intersection. So that parking study was presented to council, um officer. Gonna mispronounce his name. Lapel, 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 Officer Lapel. Um attended a council meeting and described what his process had been and ultimately council decided. Um not to approve any ordinance changes, there's a lot that's in there. That is already within the bounds of the law, there are already standards to not park near intersections. And it was determined that the uh police department and the mayor have the legal authority already to go ahead and. Better enforce those if they so choose, and so council decided not to make any, not to take any action on ordinance changes. And simply revert it to the um police department to enforce the current legal standards if they want to. Anyway, so I wanted to give an update to the planning commission on on what happened with that, because it did, it did go to council and it did.
But the door is still open, right, if they, if they, if 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 Coletta and company, they find that there's places where like. The the ordinance doesn't make sense, cause it says fifteen feet and you really need twenty two feet to turn our big brig on this, you know? That, like, that's always open, though, right, this doesn't close.
Always open, yeah, it just, you know, it, it wasn't incredibly clearly broken out. And the council at this time decided, uh most of what seemed to be in that study is already within legal bounds. And that's not something that required council action, and there are some that seem to be. You know, exceeding what's the, what the legal requirement is. Um because of the conditions of the intersection, maybe would require a larger distance. Of no parking to accommodate an emergency vehicle, but none of that was, was approved by council at this time. And it wasn't really prepared in a very clear format, so the decision, because most of those changes anyways were. And Vince can speak up too, he was present at these, um it seemed that because most of those changes seemed to be within the bounds of the law already. Um council decided at this time to to leave it in the hands of the police department. And um if they would like stricter action, then need to, they'll need to put together.
So.
A stronger documentation behind it.
No, yeah, I agree, it seemed like there were some people on council who really. Were not for um losing parking spaces or constituents versus. Uh the changes, so um. I hope that they do start enforcing some of the uh these ones that were pointed out, the ones that can be enforced today, but. I guess we'll have to wait and see.
I I've, I've seen this happen. More than a time or two, um where um what I, what I worry about is. Um Officer Lapel, um I don't worry about him, sure he's fine, um but what I worry about. Um is that there's, there's good thinking that went into this, you know? Like, hey, I I've been, been around the block around tires who drive a cop car. And these are, these are places where it's really hard to turn an ambulance or a fire truck or whatever, right, so. What what I'm, what I'm wondering though is, is this gonna die on a vine? You know what I mean?
I I do, and it's, it's a good comment, Eric, and that, but. I mean, ultimately, what, what we, what we on this planning commission discussed, and then what, what council also discussed is that a lot of what. Was being recommended is already in our ordinances.
This is, this is where, yeah.
It's really on the police department to enforce it.
Right.
If they want it enforced and, you know, us, uh most of what was in there didn't require any change in the ordinance, it requires enforcement. And that it's not something that council or the planning commission can do.
But but what, but, so that leads me to what can we do, right, um so twelve months from July twenty twenty two. We we know, um having something there, and this is, this is where, you know, I think about Churchill and all the. When I was on council, everybody was so angry about Churchill and the parking, and nothing was done, and and all I asked for, all I asked the engineer to do. Was to, was to, to come back to council and never did it. Never did it, come back to council and tell me, just tell me this question, the yellow line that goes down the middle of the road. Could that be shifted three feet to the left? You'd still have a wide enough parking, uh wide enough drive going up the hill, but you would give a little more room going down the hill. And then maybe, maybe that's, that's a change enough to to prevent the angry, the anger that was coming into it, my point is. So twelve months from now, is there any way we can ask somebody, no, not we. Is there any way that somebody can ask somebody in the Borough office to put onto their rainy day to-do list? Um putting in this PDF that we got with handwritten notes on it, you kind of put it into a spreadsheet. And list out those that this is targeted by enforcement, this is targeted by enforcement, and then twelve months from now, Officer Lapel's. Were the changes enacted, these were the, these were the issues, these were sixty two issues that were reported, forty seven issue, whatever, they were, they were pointed out, right? They were all, um and and maybe, maybe by doing that, we'll find that, you know what? Nobody really noticed that there are five on here that are not within the code, they're not within the. You know, then maybe those need to be taken up as separate action, but you know what I mean, like to finish it, because to ask a guy to volunteer his time. He's already volunteered firefighter, he's already working, you know, how many shifts as a police officer? To get, give a little resource under this to kind of professionalize it a little bit, put into a spreadsheet, itemize those things that. Yep, these should be enforcement. Put into a spreadsheet, itemize those things that, yep, these should be enforcement issues. And then put a put a fuse on it so next year it can be looked at and say, were these were these enforcement issues tackled? Right, and maybe identify within it. Were there a couple of things that really stood out that, you know, we we lumped over as, oh, this is all in a for i- in in enforceable ordinance? Or maybe there are a couple of things that 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 really fall outside of that that maybe should be. You know, it's and it's probably, like I said, it's probably only two or three, four, five things. Out of, you know, fifty or whatever that were on the 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 grocery list, but you know what I mean, like? Is that a recommendation that we can make? Is that something that council can do? Is it? Is there something there to kind of like not, because it's good, somebody took the time, this guy took the time. And and was basically said, ah, don't worry about it, they're gonna handle it, you know what I mean?
I mean, I.
You're him, how would you feel?
I I would, I I understand where you're coming from, Eric, it was also at the council meeting that he attended, and and I. I I'd like to hear Vincent's thoughts on this too, I. I I was all for trying to. Support this when we first got it, but. He didn't really defend it either. And it. I I'm not sure what action we can take if the fire department wants to say, we'd like to better enforce these things, we're not willing to tell you why or how.
Yeah, his defense of it was, he kind of just said like, well, they asked me to do this, so I did it, here it is, uh. What are what are your questions? And we had we had a few questions. But he really didn't seem to. Cause o- overly concerned. Which kind of made it harder to.
Possible defense was out the door at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there we can definitely reopen it if there's this, if if they come to us and they say, listen, here's a a specific. Request we have and a specific, you know, issue, and here's why. I I don't. I don't think that we'd be unwilling to reopen it, but I don't. I personally, and this is me me speaking personally, we have a whole planning commission here, but I I would not feel comfortable asking. It's supporting a request for our already strained borough staff to put together a justification for something that. The fire department asked for and can't justify themselves. If they would like to make an ask, more than happy to consider that, but.
Right, yeah. I'm old, I was trying to give a voice to somebody who put their blood, sweat and tears into something, but. Punt. Fourth and twenty two. No other choice. Can't get a conversation with me without a sports metaphor, sorry.
I mean, the good news is a a lot of what was in there. Is already legally enforced and council absolutely supported. Police department starting to enforce it if they feel like it's an issue. So. If if they would like to start enforcing the current ordinances around intersections. They they certainly can, they always have had that ability. And it we it did come to attention and and was addressed and discussed in a council meeting what those standards are and where.
Yeah.
Parking is not supposed to be occurring. Near intersection, so.
But nobody actually went through line by line and, you know, kind of pinpointed out that, you know, in in general, we all. Looked at it and had the same thing like a lot of these seem, you know, but. Move on, if it's not an issue, it's not worth your time.
The discussion at council was that most of these are falling within legal bounds, which means those those apply to every intersection. Regardless of whether they're ones that he indicated as issues or not. Every intersection, you you're not supposed to park within fifteen feet of the intersection.
Totally.
So.
I recall one one incident with the 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 whole the whole bus route thing. They they asked a bus to make a hairpin turn up a hill, and there was just no way for the bus to do it, but on the map. The map doesn't take account of topography, Pittsburgh, and it just didn't, wasn't a possibility, right? So somebody went out and looked at it, oh, Christ. Yeah, you could bus can't make that turn, you know what I mean? It was like, it was like a logical, like, even though it was like, well, yeah, there's no reason why a bus can't make a right hand turn. Well, it's physically impossible, you know what I mean? So it was, it was, it was on paper, it was like, it was not a problem, but in reality. It couldn't be done, and and like that, that's what I was saying, like, are there some things in there that? You know, that that codification just doesn't doesn't do. And and you know what, if it if if it's not important enough to them to want to peel those out. Then throw it back in the oven and let them bake it, you know what I mean? Forget about it, forget about it. Wasn't worth our time at that point, doesn't doesn't warrant our time at this point.
I think that's where we're at, you know, it was brought to the attention of planning commission, it was discussed, it was brought to the attention of council and it was discussed and. There it just wasn't enough.
Yep.
Support from it to justify it from from, you know, the people who are requesting it, it can always be reopened and revisited.
Yep.
But that that is the update, I know this was talked about at the last meeting, we we actually were all able to attend, or, you know, as a quorum, we were able to hold, so. Wanted to put the update on there. I don't know why that just went blue.
Cool.
Fun times talking about parking studies, shall we move on? Update on the official map. Eric, this was a a holdover from a previous meeting.
Yeah, you gotta front forward. I'm out of commission, I'm out of commission right now, I can I can hardly walk up the stairs, but. Um, so I I do have a a a draft in Calpo or something like that, it's really cool. Um, so it's it's coming along, but I can't actually physically go walk the route that I wanna, because you have the. The GPS works based off of your phone, and I have to go do it, and I can't. So, um. I'll be all better by next month, I'm sure.
We can hold on it. The other item um, was also a holdover from last month, and it's a reorganization. I don't know if we want to talk about this either, and I know we're we're minus Matt, but. Um, I have certainly been very busy lately, and Lydia has been. Um, out of pocket a lot, and I wanted to. I wanted to allow us a conversation about reorganization if anyone else. Feels like they would like to do that. Um, I did get this month's agenda and notes out. Um. The day before the meeting, but last month it was. It was a little late and didn't matter because we didn't have the meeting, but. Um, I know that I've been, I've been very busy and I'm. I have a new job and I've been, um, you know, juggling council and planning commission, and I wanted to. Put it on the agenda, so we had the opportunity to talk about whether anyone else thinks that they're. Prepared and equipped and have the time to. Do a better job.
I I think we have the conversation with all president. Uh, you know, that's my opinion. Unless somebody's saying that they don't want to do. Lydia or Kirsten, you don't want to do what you're doing. Um, I.
I'm not unwilling, I I but I I. I'm also not unwilling to let someone else step up if they would like to, so that's why it was on the agenda, and it can stay on for another month if we'd like to wait for the whole group.
I think we should have everybody talk about it. Um, but like I said, I I also want to. Uh, acknowledge, you know. Um, jobs and family and time and all of those sorts of things, if you feel. Like it's it's more of a burden than you're able to do. Then let's 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 figure out how we can support you while you're in the role. And then talk about what to do to either backfill or whatever we want to do. For you to support the role going forward, right? So, do you need help?
I'm I'm happy to continue as I am for now, but again, if. I'm happy to to have the discussion if anyone would like to to take on more, I. We've assigned the update on official map to you, Eric. Um, no, I'm I'm happy to continue for now.
Okay. We're good.
But I'll I'll keep that item on there so we can discuss it when we have a full group, um. I I have no hurt feelings if anyone feels like they have more time, so we'll keep it on the agenda for next month and we can revisit. Um, when Matt is here. Next item, the review of minutes. I shared the links for the June minutes and the July minutes, there are no August minutes, we did not have a meeting in August. I was in them yesterday, so I know I approved them, has has everyone else had a chance to look through those minutes?
Yeah, I think they look good.
Yeah, no, uh, I motioned to approve.
Second.
Eric, does your motion cover both minutes?
Oh, you want to do both? Yes. I I had no problem with either.
And I'll second the motion to approve both June and July twenty twenty two. Meeting minutes for. Crafton Planning Commission.
All right, well, there are no citizens on the line still.
I want to make a decision comment.
You have a citizen comment?
Or whatever, just put it in there. Parks uh, grant came through.
Yes, yes. Hundred fifty thousand dollars for the for the um. First. Project, the first grant that was submitted as an actual item under that parks plan.
That's great.
Or Linden.
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah, I don't think we've actually received the money yet, but we did get the grant, we got the notification that we were awarded.
Right, it's awesome. Yeah, I just wanted to call that out, make sure it's in the minutes. That's a. Every one of you here had had something to do with that, right? And that's a. That's a, that's a, that's a nice. It's a nice thing to see. See all of this abstract conversation. And the work of lots of other people, right? Um, actually come to something that is. Investing into families and kids and the reason why we do all this crap that we do, right?
Tell me the specifics, specifics again, it was the the parks master site plan, that's the the official term.
Yes.
And it was a hundred and fifty thousand, you said?
Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty thousand, that's.
Now, is that two fifty plus a two fifty match? Or is that two fifty with the one twenty five?
We do have to have a match.
Five hundred thousand total that's going into our parks, right?
When we spend it, yes, so we submitted another grant to cover the other two hundred and fifty.
Right.
Um, I am, there have been a lot of notifications in the last few weeks, so I'm still trying to sort through them, but I believe that's one of the ones we did not get. Um. But just because we we got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant doesn't mean we need to spend the money immediately, so I'm sure we'll continue looking for. Other ways to. To have grants cover the rest of that.
Yeah, it's one of it's one of the things that consultants said, what was his A AJ? You know, he was talking, he kept talking about Millvale or Jet, whatever it was along the river. And they had like a three million dollar park bill. And like out of Borough Coffers, I think they spent fifty grand because every match. That they needed to get, they went and got another. It was just, you know, parlaying down the field, so. I I think it's, I think it's, it's this, it's this good management, I think.
There was a lot of debate initially about the about the match, but the fact is, you know, we we started with one grant and that. That gives us two hundred and fifty thousand, and we can use that to try to leverage additional funds and gain additional grants, so. Um, you know, we haven't spent the money yet.
But but in order to get the two hundred and fifty thousand, we have to invest wherever the other two hundred and fifty thousand comes from, in order for us to get the two hundred and fifty thousand. We have to spend five hundred.
No, you have to spend two fifty.
Well, okay, we have to.
No, in order.
Invest a total of five hundred.
No, in order to, in order to get the two hundred and fifty thousand, we had to show that we were willing.
Right.
In the two hundred and fifty thousand match, that doesn't mean we have to actually spend it, if we can get it covered through another grant. We do not have to put in two hundred and fifty of our own, we just had.
You're not, you're not understanding what I'm saying, though. The net, 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 net is five hundred thousand dollars, I'm I'm not saying I care where the money comes from right now. But what I'm saying is, in order for this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to be invested. A total of five hundred thousand dollars will be invested into our parks.
That's true, and I I will have to look back into the details of the grant, but I think it's just a. Fifty fifty match, so if we choose to, for example, only invest four hundred thousand, then we can only use two hundred. Of grant.
Right.
So, yes.
Go out and find some other way to get the two fifty, you know, that's 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 right. Yep. That's cool, I think it's awesome. It's awesome.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, that is.
Good, good grant news is a step forward.
Yes, indeed, all right.
All right, shall we?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, good luck, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, have a good evening, everyone.
You're awesome, thank you.
Thank you, bye bye.